Okay, I see by the clock that it's that time at 7:30 and you know, this is really my next to the last time to call a meeting of order because then on the ninth when the new people who have been elected come get sworn in, I open that and then run. But we'd like to call the meeting to order and I would wish all of you please stand and repeat the pledge with me.
United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda. Any additions, corrections, anyone would like to make?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Okay. I would like to, I guess, do I have to, if I want to make a motion to change, do I have to yield the seat or can I do that now?
You can do it now, sir.
Okay. I would like after the matter of recognition of Mary White, I have a proclamation and a suggestion to make to the commission. Okay? So we'll do that, we'll pad that right after that. Other than that, any other comments?
You accept that.
I accept that as a friendly amendment to my motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, all in, any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Okay, approval of minutes of the meeting of October 6th. Motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Motion made in the second. Is there any questions, comments, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Communications, I think we had no communications this time. County Commissioners' remarks. Mr. Z.
Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. I want to talk about a package of bills that I was part of collectively introducing. It's the Time to Care Initiative. In what this package, there's four resolutions that we introduced in Oakland County. And the one that I introduced is encouraging Oakland County to change our human resource benefit structure so that part-time employees will earn an hour of sick leave for every eight hours that they work. And one of the things that we did as a government agency several years ago, you know, was we cut, we have 1,090 part-time employees. And when you have a part-time employee who has a sick child or an aging parent or they're sick, you know, they can't afford to take off time and we create a lot of health problems. So this is a resolution hopefully changing the policy for Oakland County. And then there's other resolutions so that contractors would honor this and also encouraging support of some other legislation that's been introduced in the state of Michigan, also encouraging this Time to Care Initiative. So, and I do want to reiterate on our Oakland County directory, there is a story, you know, there's on the cover, it talks about Sylvan Lake, how there was this one village and it lost by one vote. So it clearly illustrates that every vote counts and I want to encourage all of our residents to get out the vote, you know, it's an important choice of freedom and it's a great story. It's on the Oakland County cover because it does illustrate the importance of voting. So, that's it for this evening, other than my froggy voice will help in proclamations. Any questions?
Any questions for the question? Thank you very much. I'm going to miss your comments.
You can tune in, sir.
Okay, public participation, an opportunity to speak about something that's not part of the agenda? Yes?
Robert Lebo, 10-535 LaSalle Boulevard. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. In our unique, wonderful small community of Huntington Woods, we have numerous boards, committees, commissions, all made up of resident volunteers. Our residents volunteer not exclusively but in part due to the respect, the gratitude, and positive acknowledgement put forth by city officials and residents. I doubt many people would volunteer if they thought or they knew they would be slandered or degraded by a commissioner, commissioners, or any city official. I have served on numerous committees and commissions and I know I would not serve as a volunteer if these were the circumstances. Two weeks ago, candidate for Commissioner Allison Iverson posted on her Facebook page of an ugly, ugly incident which took place at a City Planning Commission meeting. At this meeting, a commissioner, an unnamed commissioner refused to review, crumpled up, and threw upon the floor a set of plans submitted for review. This post remained on Ms. Iverson's Facebook page until Friday, when it was removed by Ms. Iverson. In the 10 days the post was available, innumerable people read her post, believed her post, and most certainly passed it around promoting this most ugly incident. People are talking about it. Ms. Iverson wrote of this incident in such a manner as to suggest she was present for this debacle and she witnessed it. Here is the truth. The truth is, the incident never happened. Ms. Iverson's story is a total and complete fabrication. No planning commissioner ever refused to look at plans, crumple them up, and throw them to the floor. It is a lie and Ms. Iverson did not see this happen because it never happened, yet according to her post, it was gospel. How do I know it's a lie? At last night's planning commission meeting, I asked. Two planning commissioners said they did know about the post. One had contacted her and had a private two-hour meeting which resulted in her removing the post from her Facebook page. The post was replaced with a wishy-washy bit of writing saying nothing other than consistency, transparency, and accountability is what counted. And she will even assist training, planning, and historic district commissioners. All this from Ms. Iverson who does not understand how either commission functions and shows little in the way of recognizing transparency and accountability. Ms. Iverson's lie is unacceptable. She has slandered the planning commission, each planning commissioner, and has suggested that neither planning commissioners nor historic district commissioners know what they're doing and they need to be retrained by her. Ms. Iverson owes an enormous apology to all whom she has offended and she needs to come clean. She needs to be what she claims to be, transparent and accountable. I most certainly hope trustworthy, intelligent, reputable, knowledgeable people are elected in the November election. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Arnold Schiffman. I reside at 25835 Parkwood. Understanding that I can speak as to that which is not on the agenda, I will begin by speaking briefly about what is in the agenda. I am here today because two people who I know have dedicated their service to the city of Huntington Woods. Mayor Ron, who's a neighbor, 30-some years, I respect public officials that donate the time and the city of Huntington Woods has prospered. Second one, I am here in honor of Mary White, who has served for 20 years as a commissioner in this city. I note there are two proclamations and one resolution. One resolution suggests the naming of the wreck building in Ron's name, which I do not oppose in any manner whatsoever. It would appear that somebody who gives 20 years of their lives, raises three children, gets a doctorate degree, contributes to this city, needs something other than a proclamation. I'd like to suggest to this commission that there should be a naming, as you did to Commissioner Hesse, for a garden, something to honor Mary's service to this community. If it's not in the books to happen, then I think the next new commission should consider that with a new mayor and the new commissioners. Thank you.
Sometimes you like to have a surprise about that is to be a subject of discussion this evening. Any other comments?
Ari Smargon, 10444 Lincoln. I'd like to find out if the Department of Public Safety has any policy in place regarding bicyclers that ride in groups early in the morning around the hours of 5:30, 6 o'clock. Recently I've encountered, well, for a while now, I've encountered groups of bicyclers taking the whole road, whole width of Lincoln. And some of them did not have lights on, they were wearing black, and they're almost impossible to see. I also encountered three ladies that were jogging at that time, completely dressed in black. I stopped at the stop sign, I looked, I did not see anybody, and I proceeded. These three ladies came running from the side, they did not stop, and they expressed shock that I had to put on my brakes and that I almost hit them. In fact, one of them was so rude to me, she gave me the finger. You know, if I deserve a finger, fine. In this case, I didn't, but it happens more and more and more. People are running in the street, you can't see them. They're riding bicycles in the street, you can't see them. And I'd like to see public safety kind of be, being there throughout the city at that time of the morning to see about these things and to kind of, you know, talk to them or do whatever has to be done, but I think it's something that should be addressed. And I don't know if anyone else has ever brought it up, but you know, due to what's happened to me twice in this past week, I couldn't avoid not saying something tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, Ari?
Yes.
Well, you can either call me in the morning or call Director Pazehowski and we'll get locations and times and we'll give it some extra attention.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, no other comments? Public participation has ended. You'll have another chance at the end of the meeting. We have some presentations to make and I would like to be the presenter of the first one, if I may. This is a proclamation of the city of Huntington Woods recognizing the public service of Mary Louise White. Now, you know, I usually try to shorten things, but I'm going to read it all.
Is this revenge, Mr. Mayor?
Whereas, Mary Louise White, a resident of the city, was elected to public office in 1994 as a city commissioner, a longtime resident of Huntington Woods and associate professor, University of Detroit Mercy, earned a PhD in nursing from Wayne State University in 2010 while raising a family. And whereas, Mary has committed substantial time and energy to improve city facilities and was the driving force in the village of opening a subsequent redevelopment of the rec center and municipal pool, including being involved in the design and development of the entire central plaza area. Whereas, Mary, as her role of city commissioner, has time and time again focused her energy on education and the need to be involved with the city, instituting a new policy for interviewing residents for the boards and commissions in an effort to provide the city with the best possible candidates for each respective board opening. And whereas, Mary has also assisted in educating our residents on pedestrian safety, as well as employee safety in the workplace, making certain our employees receive training in the use of CPR-related safety equipment, including other medical standards to meet current state and federal guidelines. Whereas, Mary White has spent 20 years as a city commissioner and has been the longest-serving female commissioner, joins a select few women, including Commissioner Phyllis Kramer, who have set the bar very high and whom their service have helped make shape the future of Huntington Woods. And whereas, Mary's love of family was evident on our emphasis on our youth and senior population, giving graciously her time and energy in the development of programs for children at our library and cultural center, providing information to keep our seniors healthy and well-informed through education and self-awareness. Whereas, Mary's husband Lou, I think Lou is here, and her children Rob, Andrew, and Max, affectionately called "the boys," known in their hearts to sacrifice their mother has made to this community and its residents, and should be proud of the accomplishments which have made a measurable difference in the lives of countless families in our town. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the families of Huntington Woods, our state and local representatives, city commissioners, its administrators, and all those who have had the fortune to work with the person of Mary's statue, wish and pray that she and her family enjoy a lifetime full of health and happiness upon her retirement from the city commission. Proclaim this, what day we got? The 30th, the 20th.
20th.
20th day. Somebody didn't write that in, but I gotta put that down.
He did a nice job.
20th day of October 2015, signed to Ronald F. Gillum, Mayor. Mary, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think there are some other official events.
I'm going to save everybody in my voice and not read another proclamation, but I do want to say thank you, Mary, and to the audience out here, 20 years is a long time to be in public service. And Mary has given her heart and soul to making our community a better place. And we see you sitting here, but I have to tell you, there are countless hours that are spent when you're not sitting here, looking at issues, considering, reading, talking to people. The real work is not done up here, it's done behind the scenes. And so I really want to thank you for all that you have given to me as a resident and to all of us and thank, thank you.
Giving a politician a microphone. I won't talk for very long. I know you read, that was a wonderful proclamation that you had. But I wanted to bring something on behalf of myself, Senator Gregory, and Governor Snyder. So, and this is obviously a tribute to you. To date, when you started, that was the year of my bar mitzvah. So, that was kind of for...
Thanks, Robert.
Yes, you're welcome, you're welcome. But wanted to, obviously...
At least it wasn't your dad's birthday.
I was hoping you were going to say your birth.
No, no, no. That, well, wait, wait a little bit and that'll, yeah, I'll tell you more about that. So, but just wanted to thank you for everything you've done. I think Commissioner Zach really, really said it right. It's, you know, the things you do behind the scenes, there's so much, you know, there's so much work that's done behind the scenes and you truly care about this community and you've done a great job making Huntington Woods as great as it is. And I know you on a personal level as well, you know, we do Jewish holidays together and I know you also as just a wonderful and caring mother to three amazing boys.
They don't always just call them boys.
The boys.
They get called other things too.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody knows me, knows I run a tight line.
So, and obviously we know your family well and you're just, you know, you've been so amazing to this community and we thank you because we know that this is a thankless job, you know, most of the time. You're definitely not doing it for the money, we know that. So, but just, you know, you've done an amazing job. So, on behalf of representatives in Lansing, and behalf of the residents here in Huntington Woods, I offer you this proclamation. So, thank you, thank you very much for everything.
Some more space.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Well, I would like to make a comment, a suggestion, that I would like to propose that the city, in honor of Mary, some of you don't even know this exists, but there is a park-like area right back here, sort of. Oh, pardon me. Wrong one, okay, up here, right up here, sort of right in back of Mary's house, that I would propose that what we consider is to name that the Mary White Nature Reserve. In honor of Mary White. I will make that motion, sir.
And I'll second that.
So, we have to go through the details of how, what we need to do yet, but it's, but I think it's something that can be done and I think it's a very nice and it's right close to home and it's right there, so if, why is the pleasure of the commission?
I don't think there's any access to that.
There is access to it, there is access to it.
Yeah, there's no, it's not accessible, the park. Not to be, you know, but it is a non-accessible park. It's a pocket park with, it's surrounded. It has an easement, but it's not, the houses are built, so you can't get back there. There's fences, but that's, listen, that's great.
Okay, all.
A non-accessible park.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carried. Thank you, congratulations, Mary. Thank you for many, many years of service, for having patience to tolerate us and sometimes when we agree and sometimes we disagree, but I think when all said and done, 95, 98% of the time, we all agree. But there's room for discussion all the way through, so thank you so much for your time and I'm sure you'll be happy to be with the family a little more now. I don't know, you got school and everything you're doing, you're a busy, busy person, but again, thank you very much. I just want to add my personal thanks, thanks to you, congratulations. Okay. Now, who does this? Matter of recognition of me.
That would be me. So, if you wouldn't mind, I'm, we're not going to make any shortcuts either. So, I'm going to start out with this recognition of Mayor Ron Gillum, who's been our mayor for 34 years.
Eight months and three days.
I didn't correct you. So, recognizing the public service of Ronald F. Gillum. Whereas Ronald F. Gillum, a Missouri native and graduate of the University of Missouri School of Mines, earned a degree in mechanical engineering thereafter, moving to Michigan where he attended Highland Park Presbyterian Church and met the love of his life Shirley Blackmore, whom he married in 1958, having settled in Huntington Woods in 1959 to raise his lovely family. And whereas, as an engineer at General Motors, Ron developed a strong work ethic which included the importance of community service, the desire to assist the city, and stewardship to its residents, eventually becoming a commissioner in 1972 and a mayor in 1981. And whereas, Ron's commitment to his community is widely regarded by his colleagues, having served his community for 43 years, including service on a dozen of local and regional boards, as well as being named Vice President of the Michigan Municipal League in 1999. And whereas, Ron has diligently worked with the city administration in completing a host of large projects, seeing our municipality through numerous economic cycles, as well as having been involved in the redevelopment of the Huntington Woods Library and Recreation Center, always having an eye for fiscal responsibility and prudent management of city resources. And whereas, an entire generation of Huntington Woods residents have been blessed with knowing his honor, Ronald F. Gillum, as the only mayor, have seen Ron preside over hundreds of activities, parades, and other civic events. And whereas, Ron has earned a place in the hearts of his beloved friends and neighbors who admired his efforts to endorse civil liberties that make our city welcoming to all who choose to live within her borders, allowing this fair town to become one of the most admired cities in the state known for its leadership and community involvement. And whereas, Ron's children, including Greg, Linda, Laura, as well as his grandchildren, Aaron, Matt, Ally, Brendan, Ryan, Griffin, and Meredith, known in their hearts what it means to be a loyal public official, watching the best of the best, gavel in hand, administer the duties of Huntington Woods mayor office with skill and thoughtfulness. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the residents of Huntington Woods City, Commissioner and its administrators, and all those who have the unique occasion to work with the mayor, Ronald F. Gillum, wish and pray that he and his family enjoy a full and rich life in retirement after a lifetime of public service. Proclaim the 20th day of October 2015.
Thank you very much, Mary, that's sorta hard to sit and listen to that, you know? Was there something else?
You're up. Once again, I'm not gonna read this following that, but I do, once again, want everybody to know what an ambassador and champion our mayor has been for all of us. He has served on all of these different regional organizations, SEMCOG, the Woodward Avenue Action Association, Municipal League, and other organizations, Eight Mile Boulevard, he is active in them, he listens, he learns new ideas, he brings them back to the city, he's truly served us in this amazing fashion, and you're a tough act to follow, and I wanna thank you for all of your wonderful years, you've been mayor almost as long as I've lived here, and I appreciate that, and thank you for everything that you've done for me and for all of us.
I'm gonna have to get a new wall.
Well, you started the year I was born.
I knew you were coming.
As the fair, born in nineteen eighty-one, so I've known, no different, I've known you from all the, you know, from the Fourth of July, always seen you in the parade, just, I, I think everyone associates you and Huntington Woods, I mean, you're, you're inseparable, and you've done such an amazing job, and, and obviously, I can say this about Dr. White as well, this city has won award after award after award, one of the best cities, I, I couldn't have asked for a better place to grow up, I love being from here, I, when I talk to people about where I'm from, I hear nothing but rave of, you know, people are, are jealous that I grew up here in Huntington Woods, and obviously, I'm proud to represent Huntington Woods now, but it's because of your leadership, because of the time and energy that you've committed to this city, like I said before, this, this is a thankless job, but you've really, you know, you've dedicated your life to this, and I think you were actually part of the reason, what, what you guys actually gave yourself a pay cut, right, you went from like ten dollars a year to one dollar?
Well, sixty dollars a year.
Oh, okay, all right, so-
A whole lot, that's a big cut.
I know, fiscally responsible, you've done, you've done a good job, but just, you know, again, on behalf of myself, Senator Gregory, Governor Snyder, just, we can't thank you enough for your service, and, you know, again, I, I associate you with Huntington Woods, because that's all I've known, so it's gonna be, you know, we're gonna miss you, that's for sure, but I know you're gonna be active in the community, you're gonna stay around here, and be just, you know, part of the community, and I know now you have some time to spend with your grandchildren, and your family, and well-deserved, so, with that, I just wanted to offer you this special tribute, and thank you for, for your years of service.
Thank you. Mary, you get almost out of the little side business here, I think.
Good evening, I'm Heather Van Puker, I'm here with the Michigan Municipal League, and we're pleased to be here tonight to honor Mayor Ron and your outstanding and unparalleled public service, I won't read the entire letter, I'll leave that in your hands, but I do wanna read the closing paragraph, "We are pleased to honor you for your remarkable public service, your many statewide accomplishments, and your unparalleled commitment to training and education for local elected officials, we are wising, wiser for having had the honor of working with you, and richer for having had the pleasure of knowing you personally. We can't quite imagine league events without you and Shirley, but we know you will enjoy every minute with your beautiful family during your well-deserved retirement from public service, we sincerely thank you for all you have done for your community and for our state." Mayor Ron, we adore you and we will miss you, but we are so pleased to be here tonight to give you this honor from our Board of Directors and from Dan Gil Martin, and then I also have something from our convention this past September that we did for you at the ma'am breakfast, we-
I couldn't be there, but-
We talked about you and your absence, and we, and we, we do have a, a special tribute, actually, from the state of Michigan that we presented to you and to Mayor Grandin at that event, so I wanted to leave that with you tonight as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And I guess I did get a letter from Mayor Fassie of Southfield, and from Lillian Dean, you remember Lillian Dean? Yeah, she was the predecessor of Claire, I think, she was our recycler and tree grower, and a, a very great person, thank you. Oh, oh my word, a visiting fireman here.
Alan Kadako, Berkeley, Michigan, first of all, I wanna congratulate you, Dr. White, on your years of service, I know it's not always fun sitting up there, but you've done an exemplary job.
Thank you.
Mayor Gillum, since we're on a timeline, you moved to the city of Huntington Woods the year I was born. I can't say enough how much it's been a pleasure to work with you, I knew you before I started serving on the Berkeley City Council four years ago, and I've seen you at events, and we became closer and closer in the past four years, and I wanna thank you for being a great neighbor, a great mayor, working with our city as well as you did, and remember what Mayor Old Dwyer said on Friday, in August, you still have a seat on the grandstand, on the viewing stand for Cruz Fest, and don't forget, May, Taste of Berkeley, I expect to see you and Shirley there, and also at the Run-Walk Boom, we plan on walking with you, for the past couple of years, I've had the honor of walking with Mayor Gillum and a friend, and, and Shirley during the Run-Walk Boom, and I wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors, thank you.
Thank you. Will we run out? Well, how do you respond to something like this, it's very, very difficult, I, I, I look at it as, I've been doing sort of maybe what comes naturally to me, is being of help to some people, other people, and I think that I'm, I'm really proud of what we've accomplished in Huntington Woods over the last thirty-five, thirty-six years, I think somebody I've said, well, how do you do that, you know, it's not us up here all the time, the people that are in the forefront with, working with the employees, and working with the residents that come, are the city managers, I see Alex Alley sticking his doze around the corner back here, Alex was here for twenty-four years, my gosh, you think I'm longer, he was here a long time, and did an absolute great job, we got Amy here, who broke in in Huntington Woods, and went, went elsewhere, and then came back, and they're doing a good job, I, I think these are the people that really earn the credo, the credo to be, the work that they have done to make Huntington Woods a great place, we, we've accomplished a lot, I could lead a long list of things that I'm proud of, but probably more than anything is the Rec Center, I, I, I think that was hard, and Mary knows, you worked hard on that, too, and a few other people that just really, really worked to make that happen, it's, 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 it's a great little city in which to live, I can recall at one time hearing somebody at the Michigan Municipal League say, well, Huntington Woods, oh yeah, that's that little town that seems a lot bigger than it really is, because we were always involved in doing things, you know, and Jeff followed along after me, and he got, he got to be all the way to the president of the Michigan Municipal League, so, that was the third mayor of Huntington Woods to be president of the Michigan Municipal League, I think that's pretty, a pretty good penetration, and maybe an indication of how people respect the office of mayor in, in Huntington Woods and people over there, so, it's, it has been great, and I'm looking forward to sticking around and, and trying to get in your hair a little bit, and, and keep everybody honest, and, and working hard, so, again, thank you very much for, for all what you folks have done to make the job very easy, you really have, you know, maybe five minutes now and then, things go haywire, but overall, you make the job for us all very, very good, and I'm very proud of my family that are, that are all here tonight, and, you know, I, that's all they know, is Huntington Woods, that's great, now, I don't know, could I talk Alex into saying something? Can you say something, Alex? You need to come in and say a word or two, I gotta put him, I get to put him on the spot now.
And it wasn't always Mayor-
Unaccustomed, I know.
-that, that I called you, it was always, always Ron, and we had a great working relationship, and you're everything, as I describe it, everything an elected official should be, you're close, I consider you a friend, but not so close that you didn't question what we were doing, and look at every detail that was going on, and I'm very, very appreciative of that, and Commissioner White, Dr. White, as well, a pleasure to work with, and I think the similarity of the two of you is both very fine families, and a great balance between professional life and personal life, and civic duty, you know, serving the city of Huntington Woods, and I'm sure you're both gonna miss that dollar a year, but you're just gonna have to adjust. But, again, it was, it was my sincere pleasure, and thank you for, for calling me up this evening and recognizing me, and I will see you at, at your receptions, your respective receptions, thank you.
Thank you. Well, you know, Tony did pay us this year, he gave us the Golden Glove.
Sir.
I know, you, you probably, I didn't realize that they'd made a silver dollar in the shape of a baseball glove, actually curved a little bit, it's pretty unique, it's a, a one of, so, thank you very much, Tony. Okay, I think maybe that's probably enough, we can move on to the, to the rest of the agenda. That's me again, okay, but I'm not gonna say anything. Items of business, resolution number something R.
Number one, Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I speak to agenda item number one?
Please do.
Thank you, I'd like to start with a, a short history about the Recreation Center, some twenty-one plus years ago, the city commission, led by Mayor Ron Gillum, and Commissioners Harry Howes and Gordon Hasek, John Wersbicki and Gilda Jacobs, set about contracting with an architectural firm, and forming a subcommittee to study the plan to expand the Rec Center and build a new pool for the city, and it was about a three-year process, we had many visioning sessions and public hearings as the process went on, which Ron was very involved in, and communicating to the, to the, the public what was going on, and in the end, the committee brought back a recommendation to the new city commission at that point, because although Ron Gillum was still our mayor, the rest of the commission had changed, it was Mary White, Phyllis Kramer, Michelle Freeman Apple, and myself, that were the four commissioners, and we accepted the, the report, and moved to put out a bond proposal to the residents of Huntington Woods to adopt the, the plan to build the new Recreation Center for Huntington Woods, the motion was adopted by, or the vote was, and the bond issue was adopted by the people of Huntington Woods, and in early two thousand, the, the new, as it was to be called, center was opened to the public, they named it the center because it was meant to be the, the center of activity for Huntington Woods, and it certainly did become that, and it has many, had many great events frequented by many people, it has allowed our Recreation Center to expand their programming, and it's been a huge success. There is no doubt that you've had many notable accomplishments during your tenure as mayor, but without a doubt, the crowning achievement in your career was the, the building of the Recreation Center, so, therefore, I would like to make a motion that on behalf of the city commission, the city administration, and all the residents of Huntington Woods, in honor of your many years of service, almost thirty-five years as our mayor, dedicated service, I might add, to the community of Huntington Woods, that from this day forward, the center be named the Gillum Recreation Center.
Second.
Third.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I, I, one abstention. Thank you very much, I, I can't think of a higher honor. Yeah, I have a bottle of the beer or something, but, but thank you very much, I think that's a, that's, is a great, a great honor, and I expect it, I accept it in all humility, I think that it's, again, something that has been done for a lot of people, a lot of people have worked there, lurked there, they, I think the, to me, I still go to the hurricane swim meets because they're fun, but, but now with the new scoring system that the men's club is gonna put in, it makes it easier, and even a little more fun, I think, so, it's really great, so, new things are happening, I think when we put the, the solar panels on the roof, that was a topical thing to do at the time, probably still is a good idea, and I think that's still working, too, so, very pleased that we've been able to keep the, the Rec Center up to speed, so, again, thank you from the bottom of my heart, thank you all very, very much for your action, I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate it, because my emotions get pretty close to the surface these days, so, thank you very much. Okay, that, get past that. Okay, the next item, we're down to the peevy in business now, folks, we do have a little business, this is a, this is a business meeting. Matter of consideration, ratifying the agreement with the Public Safety Command Union regarding the position of Public Safety Sergeant, Amy, would you please explain this to us?
Sure, the city's in contract negotiations right now with the Public Safety Command Officers, and one of the issues that we are discussing with them is the creation of the position of Sergeant, so that we can make sure that there's always an incident commander on staff in case of a, a fire running in the city, we've come to an agreement on the salary for both sergeants and lieutenants, and we'd like to move forward with this, so that we can do the promotional exam, and get sergeants in place while we continue to negotiate the public, the, the command officers' contract, and that hold this particular segment up while we negotiate the contract, so this is a separate letter of agreement, I'm not sure why it says probation agreement, I, I'm thinking this is a cut and paste from our labor attorney, but it should say letter of agreement between the city of Huntington Woods and the command officers with respect to wages for both sergeants and lieutenants for the next three years.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to ratify the letter of agreement with Public Safety Command Union regarding the position of Public Safety Sergeant.
Second?
Second.
I think the, well, the one thing about it is that we've always had lieutenants replace sergeants years and years ago, and part of the problem is that they have to be somebody in charge on board all the time, and the lieutenants get paid more, and if there's call-outs, it's more expensive, when this is all said and done, theoretically, it will save us money, and I think it will, I think that's the intent, to save the city money, and have a better distribution of people in charge that are doing, knowing what they're doing and why they're doing it, so I think, I think it's a good one. Okay, are we ready for the vote?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I would do is indicate that I am very pleased that these types of an agreement, these types of agreements can be reached with the fine people we have who serve as public safety officers in this city, I was here one day, and there was heavy negotiations going on with our city manager, and the chief, and a whole bunch of people, and that can oftentimes be stressful, as you might say, so, I, I personally am glad to see a smooth relationship that we have with public safety, because these, these men and women, you know, we talk about what makes Huntington Woods Huntington Woods, and public safety is overriding factor and overriding concern, so I'm just glad that the city manager is able to come to terms, everybody's happy, that's the best way to run the city.
Very good, thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both, motion carried. Okay, the next item is a, mending the entirety of Chapter Thirty-Eight Utilities, the city ordinance, city service, this all, it's a lot of, a lot of words here, but it all goes down to the fact that we have to disconnect our downspouts from lines- have to disconnect our downspouts from lines going directly into the sewer. It's the whole idea of keeping water on the surface rather than letting it get into the pipes, fill the pipes and, and potentially come into your house. So what, what, what it's trying to do, maybe you wanna lead us in this?
Sure. In addition to making sure downspouts are not connected to our sewer system, this makes it clear that any new sump pumps that could get put in also do not discharge into our sewer system. So it's a, a clear application of a policy that we've had in place for years, but we're putting it into the ordinance so that it's clear to anybody that's gonna be putting in a sump pump that needs to discharge onto your private property, not into the sewer system.
Okay, is there a...
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the, the changes to the ordinance with respect to downspout connections to establish uniformity, as the city manager said, with regard to the sump pumps and, and other current modalities. It's, it's a, it's an absolutely necessary policy to adopt.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
Commissioner White, excuse herself a moment, but should we wait till she gets back to vote?
Can I make a comment while we're waiting? This does include a grandfather provision, which allows houses that are already connected, excluding the downspouts, to remain so unless the opportunity arises where it was feasible to disconnect entirely. But there is a grandfather in there for what does exist.
And I guess what I would say is the prior ordinance mandated that when that ordinance was adopted, people had a specific period of time to disconnect, recognizing that there is some financial burden in redoing what exists in your house right now. We've changed that, but we have tried to, in the ordinance, encourage, if you can do it, please do it because all that is the extra water going into the system that's gonna contribute to backups. So...
It's a good, it's a good move. It just, it just puts in words what we've been doing anyway. Okay, no other comments, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Okay, that gets us down to reports and minutes. We have the Huntington Woods Parks and Recreation Board meeting, May twenty-sixth and August the eleventh. Any questions or comments on those? Received and filed. Okay, the next is warrant three oh three. Is there a motion to approve, subject audit?
Still moved.
Okay, somewhere in there. Okay, does anybody have any questions about any of this? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, this is second attempt at public participation. If you missed anything that was there before or not said. It's one of the boys, I think.
Maxwell White, two six six nine zero, Huntington Road.
Can you please, Mayor, point again where you're going to honor my mother?
Well, there is, if you recall, behind your house...
I actually don't recall because I'm the only one who's ever been down there. I know it's not really a park. So the amount of, the amount of disrespect and nerve it takes on behalf of every single one of you to do this to my mother, who has served twenty years on the board, is completely and utterly ridiculous. You did the rec center named after you, the entire thing, and you're gonna give my mom a park that isn't a park? Not one person in this whole room has been to that park because it's not a park. It doesn't exist. That is so disrespectful. You couldn't, like, that's what you did? You all got together and said, "Let's honor Mary White, twenty years. Let's give her a park that's not even a real park?" That, that was your consensus?
Well, she after, like, you've been doing for twenty years.
And you, like, and everyone needs to know this, there's a reason why my mom's leaving. She loves the city. She, she, she loves being a part of the city. But the constant disrespect, and I've, I've really stayed dormant, I've stayed quiet my entire life, the constant disrespect from every single one of you is completely ridiculous. I would never, in my life, treat a human like that. You served my mom for twenty years and you gave her a park that does not exist. It's not a park. It's surrounded by houses. There's nowhere to get to it unless you go through our backyard. Oh, I mean, I, I honestly, do, do you have anything to say? I've come back from Pikeville, Kentucky to see this. I drive eight and a half hours to see my mother honored and we get totally slapped in the face yet again. Complete disrespect. For what? Please tell me, how, why could you not name a park, just like every other commissioner who's saved sixteen or twenty years? Why couldn't you do that? Why did you have to disrespect? It, it, it's actually almost worse than not naming anything after my mom. You, you just came up with something that's not real.
Well, I thought it was a nature reserve.
What is a nature reserve, Mayor?
It's a spot that it's, it's not necessarily a park, but it's an area that's open, open to anybody.
Can someone please raise a hand if they've been to the nature reserve in this room? Okay, so one, one person? So one person? So that, that's the kind of respect that you show someone that gives you twenty years of service? One, one person in this whole room?
Okay, Max, I'm, it's over. Sit down.
Have a nice night.
My name is Dr. Louis White, Mary's husband. And I was hoping not to have to speak tonight to be pleasantly surprised, but again, you've acted the way you usually have towards my wife. Twenty years of service. I've lived here sixty years in six houses with the same phone number. I believe that's longer than the mayor. Twenty years ago, my wife tried to apply to get on various committees and boards, even when no other application, no other applicant had applied. And the current city commission, which we referred to at the time as the good old boys, would call a spouse or a friend up and say, "Why don't you send in an application?" Next thing you know, they were on the red board. This happened over and over and over. Finally, my wife said enough's enough. And twenty years ago, my wife and Phyllis Kramer, may she rest in peace, and Michelle Freeman Apple, now a judge, went door to door through the city of Huntington Woods for months and months and months and months. They were told not to run. They were told an incumbent lost maybe once in nineteen forty-one. And amazingly, the three of them were elected overwhelmingly. You know, and as you heard tonight, they did many great things. My wife, whom I'm very, very proud of, went back to school, got a PhD, became a tenured professor, raised three Garrett sons, all University of Michigan graduates, served on countless committees, donated countless time and bent over backwards to be fair to the residents. As you mentioned, she instituted a policy where people who wanted to be on a committee or board would submit an application and come to the committee and be interviewed. And Huntington Woods, I believe, only the Ann Arbor zip code has a higher percentage of people with graduate level education, has a huge amount of talented people across all spectrums that were, we took advantage of and, and filled all those boards. And I remember the rec center, the whole expansion, the pool was falling apart, it didn't meet code, the, it was kind of a hodgepodge. And like you mentioned, it was a long period of time with lots and lots of people over many, many, many years. And I specifically remember that the mayor, an engineer by training, and Bob Paul, really didn't want to put it on the ballot, to leave it up to the citizens of Huntington Woods to choose to raise their taxes to build it. They thought it was kind of too big. And eventually, because of lobbying by my wife, Phyllis Kramer, may she rest in peace, and Michelle, they did, as mentioned, finally choose to put it on the ballot, where of course, the citizens overwhelmingly approved it. In some of those meetings, there were residents on Talbot across from the library that were afraid their property value would decrease due to construction and noise. I stood up at that meeting and said I would buy for cash, market value, anyone whose house was across from the library who wanted to sell. I'm sure their property values didn't go down. And as a matter of fact, as you all know, property values are at all time high. My wife really felt strongly that a building shouldn't be named after a person. No man is important, more important than the team. You know, the team, the team, the team. And that rec center and everything that went with it was really the work of hundreds and hundreds of people, as you know, for many, many years. When Alex decided to retire, it was suggested that maybe a building be named after Alex Alley, you know, who certainly earned it. He was a great city manager. But, you know, he, he said, "You know, I don't need my name on a building. I would suggest, possibly, instead of naming the rec center after the mayor, you produce a statue for him. Maybe the men's club could pay for it. A bust, put it in city hall. Or if you want, maybe honor my wife in a more appropriate way." That park, which we've backed up to for thirty-one years, is technically owned by the city. The city doesn't cut the grass, the city doesn't maintain it, the city doesn't police it. Sometimes homeless people have slept back there. One of our neighbors, whose son was an alcoholic, used to go back there to drink. There is legal access and easement, I believe, ten feet wide. Again, not used by any citizen other than some of the houses that back up to it. So as my son Max spoke, it's really a slap in the face, in my opinion, to twenty years of my wife's service. On Friday, I saw this agenda, there was no mention of anything. Nothing. So obviously, as an afterthought, well, we gotta throw her a bone. And as my son said, "Max, it's a little piece of property technically owned." We were thinking, maybe if you wanted to honor her more appropriately, you could name Scotia Park after her, Dr. Mary White Park, you might wanna consider that. Or Mayor, you might say, "You know what? I really thought about it and I don't really want my name on this building." Because it really is a city of people who work hard to make it the great place that it is. And for really, for twenty years, my wife has fought the battle. And with Phyllis, you know, it was a little more even fight. But again, again, I just think for twenty years of service, as an afterthought, a small piece of land, which, as my son said, no one has access to, is really a slap in the face. And I think you should be ashamed of yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing none, city manager report?
Uh, two items, both receptions. There will be a reception on November the ninth for the mayor. It will be from five to seven PM at the recreation center. Following that will be the mayor's last official opening of the commission meeting. And then on November twenty-ninth, there'll be a reception for Commissioner White. That'll be from two to four PM, held at the library. Refreshments will be served at both. The entire community is invited to attend both and, and give their thanks to both Commissioner White and Mayor Gillum for their years of service to the city. And that's it.
Okay. Commissioner's remarks, I don't know if I should even ask, Mary, maybe you would like to slip, or you have something that you'd like to say?
Oh, these are my last Commissioner's comments. I'd like to go last, please.
Oh, please, okay.
Before you.
Okay.
Yes, well, obviously, what I thought was the celebratory nature of tonight's meeting, first thing I'm gonna say is how much Ron Gillum has meant to me. I first, I've lived in Huntington Woods almost forty years. My wife Barbara has lived here over sixty. And I first got to know the mayor when I became involved in the city, which was in nineteen ninety-eight, when I submitted an application to serve on the zoning board of appeals and they immediately put me on the planning commission. So I did serve on that body for six years and then the mayor saw fit to grant my request to serve on the planning commission. And so I have a lot of time spent with him and I've learned a great deal from Mayor Gillum. And one of the things I've learned about him over the years, we have made a practice since I've been on the commission of having lunch, try to have it at least once a month. And the difference between us is you can have a beer with lunch and I can't because I'd be asleep in no time. But I have learned from Mayor Gillum that one of the most important things about this job is knowing when to talk and when not to talk and what to say and what not to say. And while generally speaking, we are almost a one hundred, not one hundred percent unanimous body, but despite some, you know, there's always a little rough water. I think if, as I've said many times in public forums, if you went back and looked at our voting record, you'd see that it was about, I guess, ninety-eight percent unanimous. And there are very few city councils, commission boards of any kind that have that kind of success record. And I submit that that success record has been due to the steady hand of Mayor Gillum, who has exercised great, great discretion and taught us all how to be better commissioners and taught us all how to be better citizens. And the notion or the idea of honoring people in this, in this city and how we should do it, I think most people are remembered best and honored most for what they've done and how they've done it. And so not wishing to weigh in on, on this, this current matter beyond what it is, all I can say is that the legacy that we all leave is based on what we've done and the way we've treated people. And I have no doubt that municipal government will look at Mayor Gillum in wonderment in the decades to come about how anyone could go for that many years and be so popular and be reelected every time. I don't think there was ever opposition.
A couple of times.
Well, someone tried, all right. But in as far as my colleague Commissioner White is concerned, she's a highly intelligent person. I think as Mr. Representative Wittenberg noticed, she has a wonderful family. If you've watched the meetings over the years, she and I, as I have said occasionally, have disagreed about things, but I like to believe that it was a legitimate disagreement about a policy matter, not a disagreement about a personality matter. And, you know, we've known each other a long time and she's a very admirable person and has a wonderful family. And I think that, as I said, the legacy we all leave is to be judged by others. And whether, whether it's a preserve or a park or whatever, it, the legacy is ultimately what people will remember about what we did in years to come. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, it has been a pleasure for the last eighteen years to serve with you, Mary. We've had many great conferences, many great meetings. And I have always said about you, and I know you've heard this before, that agree or disagree, and as Commissioner Olson said, most of the time it's agreement, but agree or disagree, one thing you can always count on is, is Mary has what, the best interest of the people of Huntington Woods in her heart. Always has and that's always been very much appreciated. Mayor Gillum, you've been an excellent example for every one of us on how to be a, a good representative of the people. You're from, from Missouri, the Show Me State, but in, in our case here in Michigan, you have certainly showed all of us how to, how to represent the people and how to be a good citizen. And I very much appreciate the, the time you've spent with us. I appreciate the friendship we have and looking forward to keeping in communication for many years to come. Thanks.
Ron, the day after I got elected sixteen years ago, you took me in the morning up to the Michigan Municipal League and showed me where I could learn and how I could learn. And I met the staff. Then you followed that up with going in the afternoon to Lansing to meet the legislative staff of the Michigan Municipal League, which represents all cities and villages in the state. And showed me basically who are the specialists that dealt in that area. I appreciate that very, very much. You're the one that sometimes has to control me and advise me and I will miss that. Although recently, I got some advice from my wife. She said, "Whenever I, ever I'm at the meeting, I look so serious, people take me as being arrogant." So for... So, for those that have taken me for being arrogant, I apologize for not smiling. And I will try in the future to smile. But I really appreciate the fact that you're willing to take people, different political view, different style, and work with everyone to make us in this city the best that we can be. I do know, though, that you're only the second longest reigning mayor, although the fifty-year mayor, I believe, is Mackinac Island. And the reason that she continues as mayor is she can't get off the island. Mary, I thought you had put Ari up to his statement when he got up and he talked about running and the whole issue of safety. When we have a meeting, and especially when the days get longer, Mary would remind people, we're reflective. The police department, public safety, will make this available to you. If you walk on a lawn in the city of Huntington Woods, if you walk in a park that is safely fertilized, it is not something which is a risk to you. When it comes to the issues of health, Mary has been super sensitive. And it's an area where the rest of us don't have a skill. For many years, Mary was the leader of the residents association. So, she was the advocate for all the different homes and all the different people. And if you attended a Fourth of July parade, there would always be recognition and an award for someone. I thank you. I realize now that you will have, I don't know if it's more fun, but that you enjoy very, very much your teaching role and your demonstrating role as it relates to nursing. And I know that the students that have you, that follow you, that are supervised with you will benefit. And I also know that Louis better be careful or Mary will steal his entire practice.
I don't think that'll ever happen. Yeah, well, this is gonna change a little bit because I'm gonna be, as I've always been, open and honest with my comments and my Commissioner comments. It's my last Commissioner meeting. And it is twenty-one years here. And through thick and thin, through good times and bad, and through tragedy and adversity, that I managed to be here and come prepared. Driving from university centers, because times that we usually were, were very flexible on no longer became flexible. So, the time I had to rush in to get to a meeting, but I always made it. I made it in time, and if not, the meeting started. So, it was always teaching. I don't think I missed, but maybe two meetings in twenty years, two, three meetings. It was very, very important that I be here. It was very, very important that I do research. I'm a researcher. I have a PhD in researcher. Two thousand and nine is when I got my PhD. But, so on every topic, I went and did my homework. And it somehow didn't always equate to what was a popular discussion of what we should do. But I always asked the hard questions. And sometimes I got answers and sometimes I didn't. But I made decisions based on what I thought was best for Huntington Woods. And so, it was with when I started in nineteen ninety-four. I was on the residents association for over a decade, president, I think for eight years, and couldn't get on a board and commission. So, I tried really hard. I said, I guess I'm gonna have to run. And I was like the third man in, sort of like Biden is now, is he gonna get in or is he not gonna get in? But I came in and everybody said, are you crazy? You're the third woman in. Only two can make it, you know? They're not gonna accept the third. So, I said, that's all I needed to really hear. So, I went to every house, knocked on every door, got a lot of doors slammed in my face. And during this time, we had already started at the ground level because the, the men's club had done a ten thousand version of what, they had an architect come in and do this version of a double story of the rec center. That was off the plate. But then, the time started getting good, building was getting cheaper. So, we started a grassroots campaign going to every ball diamond with a list and a, would you, if we did this, would you vote on? And we were getting people that said, yeah, we would, we would. It may impact our taxes. How? So, how could we do this? So, when we got the architecture in, and then they said, listen, it would really, the pool is really bad, let's change it around. So, it was really important that sometimes when you go in and think that, you know, you gotta be able to be flexible in your thinking. And so, I thought that, so let's go on. And I just kept going, pushing and pushing and pushing. And on election night, to my surprise and my family's surprise, I was in. And we had biggest pizza party on my block. And my kids were just up and down. And I just remember it as a, as a very, very fun time. My first meeting with Ron, Mayor Ron, he said to me, let me tell you. The whole slate that I endorsed, lost. So, my first thing to you is don't ever endorse anybody in Huntington Woods in a Huntington Woods election. Because you gotta work with them after that happens. So, I, I really listened. When Ron tells me things, I listen to him. I really do. I take it for Bible, you know? So, and I really have stayed neutral and I, I wanna go on with whoever gets there. But I'll tell you, my richest time was on the residents association with people like Shelley Bobrow, Sid Cohen, Sheldon Cohen, Richard Gold. And they were, I was at the time thirty-one years old. And having, I would come with a baby to the meetings. And they said, that's okay, that's okay. And we'd have dinners at the beef carver, because they were all senior rates. And this was a funny joke, that Shelley Bobrow said, just tell them you're my date and you can get the discount. And my husband said, what are you? I said, it's their wisdom. It's the knowledge of, of their life in Huntington Woods and how they lived it and the joy of what they tell me about what happens in Huntington Woods. So, I don't think I'd ever wanna know or predict outcomes and have the answers to do everything or the right to follow the rules always or to always say the right thing. You should always say what you think is in your heart. Or sometimes I fail and I've made wrong decisions sitting in this seat. And I don't regret making wrong decisions, because it's decisions that I made based on evidence that I had. But it's from wrong decisions and maybe not the right decisions, that the wisdom to know what to do the next time around. So, what I tell my students is there's a way to reflect. We reflect on what we do in life and how we live our life and how, how we are as citizens and as people and how we're gonna leave this world. So, I do a lot of reflection. But when I don't ask for permission, I tell my students, if they come up to me and they said, well, can I do this? I said, are you asking me? Or, because sometimes you're gonna get, no. I said, sometimes it's better to ask forgiveness. So, I tell them, think outside the box. You know, when you're, when you're saving people's lives, it's that reflexive thinking. And that's what's really important in Commissioner work in any aspect of a position, is that you think moment to moment on your feet. You don't have time to sit and think about the past. That past all comes in and reflexive thinking is thinking in the moment, thinking, changing and thinking your thought. And that's what I gained so much from being a Commissioner here, is thinking. And that has helped me. I can't tell you, say, how many lives in my practice, because I think outside the box. I ask the hard questions. I do my research and I think on my feet and I change my thinking. So, I think that that's one thing that this has done. Has it been difficult? It's been very difficult, especially after the, the loss of Phyllis Kramer. And really, you know, she was here, her head's up on the thing, so she's over ten years. And, and we have a program, we really haven't adopted the program. And it hasn't gotten that input from the only biggest community we have is the men's club that comes together and really helps bring things together. So, I really think it's important, if there's one thing that I'd like to do when I leave, is resurrect and reunite the residents association. It is so important that we have that residents association, that all residents can come and talk and communicate and be kind to each other. We're gonna say things wrong, we're gonna make mistakes. But being kind is the biggest thing that we could be. Unite. After this election, roll up your sleeves. Who cares? Let's go forward and make this, the Huntington Woods the special place that we know it is for, for our children. So, I think that, that that's really important. And I'm glad that I really never got paid, sometimes a bad candy bar from Tony. But I didn't, I never wanted to be paid for this position, because I wanted to know that I did it of what I thought was the best resolve. So, when I got a call Thursday at six PM and it was a decision to be made to name the building, I didn't know anything about it. And I didn't know anything actually about the party, because I didn't have a party scheduled. So, to be honest, I was really sad, because I felt like I had been left out. And it's the way I've been feeling now for ten years here. So, once again, I think that this is a very cruel hoax that was done to me tonight, to name really a swamp area with no entrance and no name. And everybody probably will think it's funny and they'll laugh about it. But I was given different information before I walked in the door. And things were changed up in a few minutes. And if people think that's funny, you got the last laugh, guys. You got the last laugh. So, in all honesty, I'm very disappointed, but I'm not surprised. So, I hope that we can go forward and make this community the wonderful and beautiful community that I raised my children to be. And I thank my son for speaking up. And I thank my husband for coming to the microphone. Thank you.
Well, it's, it's the, it's the end time, the last time I'll be able to make Mayor's remarks at the end. And one of the things I'd like to do, and this was a thought earlier, I would like to say, let's reconsider that vote. I really do. I think it's, it was. Well, my thoughts, and I'll tell you that right now, and I know we've talked about it, but I thought was to name the park at Huntington and, and Eleven Mile, the Mary White Park. That's what I wanted to do. But we said, no, let's do this, let's do it this way, let's do this. And maybe if, if, if I can, if we can do it and reconsider it at the next meeting, I'd like to do that. So, that's something we'll have to put on the agenda if we can. I, I recognize, I think, Mary, your, your work for the city has been very good. We've listened to you, you worked hard, you tried hard. We didn't always agree. I mean, but that's the way politics are. You.
But you always had respect for me, Ron, and that's what I.
So, I, I would like to do that with, with what we've heard tonight and all we've seen tonight. I'm, I'm in awe, I'm overwhelmed, and it's, maybe I'm not thinking clearly. But I, I thank all of you for coming and showing respect. It's been a great run to have here in the city. I, when they said we need somebody to take it, I had the job back thirty-five years ago. I said, okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll accept it, but I probably won't run. Well, when it came time to run, there was nobody running against me. So, I ran and it's been about like that ever since. So, I've tried hard, as has Mary, to, to do the right thing. Not always do we do the right thing, but I try to do the right thing. And I think overall, when, when the little city we are is considered amongst as probably the top ten cities in the country in which, which to live, small cities, that's, that's pretty awesome. It doesn't happen by accident. It happens with a lot of hard work. And you, as commission, what we have to do is to hire good people to do the job done right. And then make our hardest job, keeping them on the job. That's what we do, keeping them here. So, I think Alex and Amy, Amy hasn't been here that long yet, but she will be. She's doing well. So, with that, I would say that's all I have to, to say tonight. Again, thank you all for coming. Appreciate your efforts too. So, it's been fun and it'll continue to be fun, I'm sure of that. There'll be agreements and there'll be disagreements, if that's the way it is. With that, the meeting is adjourned.